All right. All right, we'll get rolling. You good Omar? Okay. I will call the appointments meeting to order. And to start, we have two meeting minutes to approve. JP, did you get a chance to read those this afternoon?
I did not get a chance to read them. I apologize.
Okay, then we'll move those off till next week. They came after noon, so that's fine. We'll move it. Just so you get a chance to review that. Mayor, any communication other than what's on the agenda tonight?
No.
Okay, thank you. And any residents would like to speak, do any public speaking on anything other than what's on the agenda tonight? Not seeing any hands. Okay. We have two appointments to move forward. I'm going to start with Kevin Mon again, just to get him out. He's going for the ECA grants term expiration 12/31/2022. I had a great conversation the other day with Kevin and he's been a commercial photographer for 35 years, volunteering in multiple communities out in the Boston area on all different art platforms. He's moving from Boston to Belkirk Town. He bought a lot of land out there and built his own house and is now retiring in this area. And then actually fell in love with East Hampton when he went to some art walks prior to the COVID cases. He's also been in going to some of the Zoom meetings for both ECA and ECA grants and been participating in some of those as well since he got involved with East Hampton. Works out in Boston and been in photography programs out there, went to art school out in Boston and just sees the excitement in East Hampton arts. He was looking also for studio space in town now that he's kind of found this as a kind of a destination for him and his passion. So he wants to continue to extend his involvement in our community. Again, I had a great conversation. I don't know if you guys have any questions or anything around him that maybe I could answer? Okay. He seems pretty good, so I'll entertain a motion to approve recommend Kevin to the ECA grants term expiration 12/31/2022.
I will move to make the appointment.
Do I have a second?
Second. Sorry, I'm taking notes.
Yeah, I know. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Gomez?
Hi.
Counselor Kuzinski?
Hi.
And I am a yes, so that passes three to zero. All right. So moving on to Mr. Chris Norris for the East Hampton Fire Chief. Chris, I know you're on. Are you available and unmuted? I don't know if I can...
I am, sir. Good afternoon.
There you are. Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us today. And I'll kind of kick it off here and pass it over to you. Chris, as everybody knows, in case you don't know, has been the mayoral appointment for the Fire Chief for the City of East Hampton. And I've looked over your resume.
We're losing you.
So I would... You got me?
Can you please start again?
How about now? Can you hear me now?
That time we did.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay, so I'm back? Okay. Got to love Charter, right? So Chris, I just talk about some of the highlights in your education, your career. You know, anything that you want to share with your resume that, you know, we could go on and then we'll go around the room for any questions.
Sure, absolutely. Number one, thank you for this opportunity, everyone. It's good to see everyone given the circumstances here. But so essentially, just a little bit of background about myself for those who I haven't had the chance to meet. My, I live in the town of West Hampton. My wife and I have two girls. They're going into sixth and eighth grade. I basically am a native to the area, growing up here, lived here most of my life, all except for one year. Currently, I work in the city of Northampton as the Deputy Fire Chief and one of their paramedics. I've been there for 20 years now. And in addition to that, I also, I started my fire service profession in the town of West Hampton. I actually started in April of 1994 as a volunteer firefighter. And in January of 2007, they actually appointed me based on a vacancy to the position of Fire Chief, which is a part-time position out there. That department has around 35, 35 to 30 all volunteer members. They provide both fire and EMS services. And I was chief out there for about 12 and a half years up until the point I retired from that position last August. People ask me why I kind of stepped back and why I retired from that position. And ultimately, I had the opportunity to go back to school four years ago for my PhD. And it's going to be in public policy and administration with a concentration in emergency management. And last July, my perspectives got approved through my committee. And I was beginning my proposal stage for my dissertation. So when you looked at my position full-time in Northampton, starting school, my daughters who are actively involved in sports, my daughter was beginning her JV season in soccer Hampshire Regional. And then my other hobby, I guess you want to call it, is I've been teaching for the Mass Fire Academy since 2003. And in that organization out there, I currently reside in the position of I'm the statewide coordinator for the Call Volunteer Recruit Training Program. That program, we teach all across the state. We have close to 240 people, 240 students a year come through that. I have around right now 110 instructors that work for me across the state part-time. So given all that, it was the right time for me last year to step away from West Hampton and focus on some other avenues. So that's just a little bit about me and my current positions and kind of how I came through the fire service. In regards to East Hampton, I think a lot of the personnel in the department will tell you that over my 20-plus years in Northampton, I've had the great, I've had the great opportunity to work with them in a number of different capacities, whether that was on mutual aid calls for us coming into the city or for all of them coming into Northampton, both fire and EMS. And in addition to just the routine mutual aid calls, I've also had the opportunity to attend and participate in a lot of fire and EMS training with all the personnel there as well. So they hopefully have had a good chance to get to know me personally and professionally over the last 20 years.
Great, thank you. Omar, did you have any questions you wanted to kick off with?
That was to me?
Yes, sorry.
I'm sorry. Sometimes it's really hard to understand what you're saying.
My computer is not...
Yeah, the connection. I prefer Counselor Kuzinski asks first and then if you have any other question, I will go after him.
Counselor Kuzinski?
Thank you, Chairman Lynch. Welcome to East Hampton, Chris. Dr. Norris, almost Dr. Norris.
Not quite yet, but Chris is just fine. Thank you, Counselor. Good to see you again too, by the way.
Very good to see you. I, looking over your resume, I can't imagine all the things you've done in a very short period of time. So I'm very much impressed and pleased that you're interested in the city. But I guess I'm not altogether surprised that you wouldn't be interested in East Hampton. I think it'll be a great place for you to work and with a great crew and team of people who I believe you'll find very supportive of your efforts and interest here in the city. And we're glad that you're able to bring your expertise, at least I am. The 35-member, 30 to 35-member department in West Hampton seems like a handful in and of itself, a career. The work you've gotten in Northampton, I think you've dovetailed very nicely your experience. I know you had been with EMS for a very long time and had been the deputy in charge of that position and that area and focus in East, in Northampton. And then moved over to direct staff, I guess I call it like online staff work. And I think that's a very smart, smart move on your part and I think it'll bode well for your work here in East Hampton. So I'm very pleased with that. Very interesting to hear about your work as a call, with call firefighters. You may notice on occasion, I am very much interested in call firefighters as a training and support and learn about the people here in the city. So I will be very much an advocate for supplementing our personnel and bringing on call firefighters here to integrate with the rest of our city. And also, I'm very much impressed and hope that you're able to work with grants. I know you were in charge of grants with EMS for a while in Northampton and done a lot of great work with grants. I hope you can bring some of that here. So I hope you can tell us a little bit about your plans for East Hampton.
Yeah, absolutely, and thank you. Let's start with, you talked about call firefighters. So I guess when I look at my position at the State Fire Academy, I've been very fortunate and blessed in a number of different capacities. With that program, I've had the opportunity to meet and work with and train a number of different students and firefighters across the state. When you look at East Hampton and some of the surrounding communities as a starting point, just looking at Southampton and West Hampton, they heavily rely on both call and volunteer firefighters. And not all the time, but from time to time, they provide that mutual aid and automatic aid coming into East Hampton, both for fire and EMS. So being able to continue to provide and at least help train those firefighters, not only across the state, but also here back in our region that will benefit East Hampton, I think is a huge asset to East Hampton alone. When you look at the call personnel in East Hampton, obviously, that is kind of framed in a way through civil service. But certainly, that's an avenue that we can look at going forward. I know there's contractual provisions in the locals contract pertaining to call firefighters. And certainly something that can be looked at to supplement the full-time career firefighters going forward.
In terms of your budgetary work, I know you've had responsibility for budgets. I think that would be very helpful and we're going to be very closely watching the overtime budget. That has been an issue for many years. I understand we're in a much better position with additional firefighters. And so we're hopefully looking forward to getting that a bit under control from the financial perspective. So we'll be working with you on that too.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely. And I certainly understand the sensitivity to the budget constraints that all municipalities are facing now, particularly with the COVID issue out there across the country. And I know the community has benefited with the four safer positions that the mayor helped get into the community to increase the staff and also at the same time, help minimize the reliance on overtime on a regular basis. And then going forward pertaining to grants, there's certainly a lot of opportunities out there, both for the larger grants and even the smaller grants. And I certainly want to be aggressive in going after those to maximize the ability for the community to benefit from some of those funding, alternative funding sources that are out there.
I would certainly hope that both your direct work and maybe involvement from the staff who are able and willing to help with regard to grants can put together a great package for our city.
Yeah, and that's certainly one thing when I get in there, coming in from the outside, I've talked to a number of people about some different thoughts and ideas. And ultimately, one of my main initiatives has to be just going in there and just sitting and listening back to all the personnel. They have numerous years of that institutional knowledge, both organizationally and throughout the community. And who best not know what is needed going forward than those individuals. And then certainly, one of my philosophies always has been, always try to give people coming up behind you more opportunities than you ever had. And that certainly is what I want to do. And I think based on my background experiences, I can help point people in a direction, support them along the way, but give them those opportunities to develop their skill set and contribute back to the organization and community.
Excellent. Great to hear that. We look forward to working with you and can't wait to have you get started.
Thank you very much, Counselor. It's always good seeing you.
Always good to see you. You've been great. I will add for the members of other members of the committee, anytime I've had a chance to interact with Dr. Norris, almost, Chris Norris, he's been terrific, very personable, very accommodating. And I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski. I'm going to jump in, Chris. You know, I want to say thank you for spending some time on the phone with me the other day. I thought we had some pretty great dialogue and, you know, like I said earlier, I think you have an extensive resume. And I've also talked to a lot of the team. And you have a lot of support in our community too, which I think is really pretty outstanding. The only question I really have that would be from me, coming from outside the department into, you know, an already functioning team and then coming in to leading them, what would you see like the hardest part of coming into East Hampton would be? And have you already put plans together to kind of, you know, kind of jump in and, you know, be that leader that they're looking for?
No, thank you for that question. I think honestly, the hardest part for me is pacing myself. I have a lot of different thoughts and ideas. And those thoughts and ideas may not necessarily be right for East Hampton Fire or the City of East Hampton. But I think as much as I may have those thoughts and ideas, again, not to keep on going back to it, but coming in there, just sitting and listening to some of the personnel and seeing what they have for recommendations, initiatives going forwards, things that have worked, that have not worked, and see how they coexist with some of my ideas. And then kind of collaboratively, we can move forward together and slowly make some of those changes. I think when you look at changes, I think you say that word change in the fire service and rightfully so, people get nervous. And I always kind of supplement that response with, it's always good to pace that change. If you can pace that change, let people get accustomed to you and your philosophy and why we're looking at some options and change. I think it's, I think it goes a lot further than just coming in and making some sweeping changes. So that really is, the first 30 days is really my main focus, is coming in and just sitting back and listening. So I certainly, I like to lead, I like to lead from the front. But I've also been taught and have seen over the years that many times, the best thing a leader can do is get out of the way and let their people do their job. And if I can provide them the resources to do their job and do it safely, I think we'd be in a good spot.
Great, thank you. You know, I think that's it for me. I'm going to go to Counselor Gomez and, you know, kind of circle back to him. Counselor Gomez, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, for the record, I would just want to say that I was part of the interview committee. When we have at least, if I remember, there was six candidates that came to our, I'm sorry about the phone. I was part of that committee and Mr. Norris was one by far one of the best one and of the group that we interviewed that day. After that, that I said, I just want to make, I want to say thank you to Chris for being here. And yes, I do have a question is, I'm part of this committee, but I'm a chairman of the public safety. And my question is, for the first three months or 100 days, do you have any plan? And if the plan, if the answer is yes, can you briefly, I know it's 100 days and probably it's going to be a long, we can be hours here. But can you please briefly can tell us what is your plan for the first 100 days that I think is going to be good?
Yes, absolutely. And thank you for that question as well. I've already spoken about kind of the communication aspect of it internally. In addition to that, I think also making the time to get out and talk to some of the external stakeholders out there and other department heads of different agencies, some of the different community groups that are out there, understand how the fire department can help support some of their initiatives and seeing what we can do to go forward and collaborate on different projects to benefit the community. I think also, one of the things I really want to look at is in terms of public education. What can we do in terms of different thoughts, ideas, classes, programs for whether it's community CPR programs and training people in the use of an AED? If we can look at different opportunities for looking at NARCAN, making publicly available to people, working with the school systems and getting some of our employees in the schools for safe education, collaborating with the council and agent and seeing if there's opportunities out there to do some senior safe programs, looking at maybe some of the common ones being slips and fall hazards that are out there. Is there an avenue that we can look at to help do some training out there in the public with that? And then the other two that really come to mind, number one is EMS. EMS, obviously, in East Hampton is a larger component within that system. And certainly, I want to look at that, meet with some of the personnel, determine some of the efficiencies and maybe inefficiencies, if that is the case, and figure out how we can enhance the system and make it, just try to improve that system overall. And then the last one would be training. One of the challenges based on the system in East Hampton is the call volume and time management. Right now, training can be challenging. When you're always running on the ambulances, when you're still out there doing firebase calls, transporting them to either Cooley Dickinson Hospital or Bay State Medical Center, to then come back and keep up with the day-to-day activities of upkeep and maintenance of vehicles and equipment and then training, that can be challenging. So I really want to look at maybe some different avenues for training, how we can better incorporate that in East Hampton and provide a consistent framework for our personnel for getting them trained and operating safely in the fire ground. Again, I think through my, through my affiliation with the Mass Fire Academy, they have a number of different resources that are available to East Hampton. And certainly, I'd like to look at partnering with the surrounding communities, bringing that training to East Hampton, but also partnering with our neighboring communities who we've tried mutual aid with to collaborate on that training as well.
Thank you. And I have another question, if the chairman let me do it. Thank you. This was, this question, I made this question to you when, in the interview, and I just want to say it publicly. What happened if one of the firefighters or what the EMC of make any raises comment and on Facebook or any of those pages? What is going to be the procedure to deal with that person?
So thank you for that question. And certainly, that unfortunately has been an issue across the country and recently, just in this immediate area with social media and some of those challenges. I think by coming in there and setting the tone and setting the expectation, number one, as a leader of that organization, letting people understand that certainly that number one is absolutely unacceptable. We're held to a higher standard, rightfully so in the community. And doing anything like that is absolutely uncalled for. In the provisions of the union's contract, they have a, there's a part in the addendum section pertaining to the disciplinary process. So that would certainly had to be looked at. We'd have to look at in terms of the violations of any city policies or department policies pertaining to social media. And then making sure that we have ongoing training, that obviously, this is not going to be tolerated and educating the personnel about the importance of that and how it's unacceptable going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Thank you, Chris. I'm going to look at other counselors that are in the meeting and see. President Coniff, I see your hand raised. Would you like to ask a question?
Yes, thank you. Chairman Lynch. Chris, it's really nice to meet you. I didn't get an opportunity to call you in advance. I was going to bother you earlier today and then I thought better of it because you might be a little busy. So a couple of things. I want to first make a comment that, and Counselor Gomez, we were having lunch the other day and a virtual stranger came up to us and spoke praises about you. And I had no idea who the person was, but he wanted to make it known that he supported your appointment to this position. So people are just walking up to us on the street to tell us that they support you. So that's really good. Also, in going over your resume, I just, I just want to make a couple of comments. One, clearly, you are in this position for the long haul. You've certainly shown advancement, both in your position and longevity. And also, I'm very impressed with your focus on education and the increasing levels that you have aspired to. So that tells me that you're extremely serious about this and that you have a deep knowledge of fire service. And for that, I'm also very impressed. Had a couple of questions. There are kind of cookies, so don't worry about it. So one, really, the one that I want to really talk a little bit about is, is when you're, you know, in a department like this, which is very stressed, or it's a stressful position, it's a very close-knit community of firefighters. How do you go about handling stress and ensuring that morale is at a healthy level? What is your style in terms of managing through conflict, which I'm sure comes up from time to time?
Yes, thank you for that. And I think one of the things I've learned over the years is the importance of getting out on the ground floor, working with the personnel on more of a day-to-day personal level. It's been challenging over the years at a senior executive management level to find that right balance between trying to meet the expectations of both operations and administration and also making sure that you have that interactivity with your personnel. I think when you look at some of the challenges in emergency services, you kind of really hit the nail on the head with one of the biggest ones out there is behavioral health. And when you look at the unfortunate reality, in 2017 and 2018 in fire and police, there was more deaths by suicides and line-of-duty deaths in both those professions. And what that really brought to the attention for all of us is the need out there to make sure, number one, we have that intimate knowledge of all of our personnel and what are the resources out there? I can tell you through the Mass Fire Academy, I've partnered with the, they have the State Fire Corps of Chaplains. They're a huge resource and advocacy for the fire service in general. There's one individual right out here in Western Mass who's one of the deputy fire chaplains. They have a whole host of resources that can be made available through all of East Hampton's fire personnel. So that certainly is one avenue. And then I think the other one, to answer your question, is now becoming more important than ever is the development of peer support groups within agencies. And even with these peer support groups, maybe not necessarily isolated in a silo just with East Hampton alone, but looking at maybe partnering with a Northampton, Amherst and East Hampton, standing up some of these peer support groups. So people may not feel comfortable coming and talking directly to the Fire Chief about whether it's a personal or job-related issue or concern or challenge they're having, but they may feel more comfortable going to someone in this peer support group. So that's certainly something that I want to look at and bring forward as an opportunity for East Hampton, all East Hampton fire personnel.
Great, thank you. The other question I had was really just around, we've touched on your 30-day plan, your 100-day plan. But as you, you know, currently, the environment that we're in is challenging. And I think it's even more challenging for the EMS first responders and the essential workers who are frontlines to this pandemic. And as you come into a new firehouse, what are you going to be looking for in terms of ensuring the safety of the firefighters and the protocols that are in place? I imagine that they're pretty standard across fire departments, but what are you going to be looking for to ensure that you know that your staff is being safe?
Yes, so thank you for that question. I think when you look back at the history that I've had, one of my main focuses, I think hands down, has always been firefighter safety. I've had the absolute privilege to sit on... I've had the absolute privilege to sit on, as a principal voting member, NFPA 1500 and 1582. NFPA is the National Fire Protection Association. Those are basically consensus standards across this entire country that departments can use as templates, as guides, to meet industry best practices. And number one, having the intimate knowledge of information on there, being one of those principal voting members, I can help bring that back to East Hampton. I think to answer your question directly, coming in, things that I would be looking for are really those, that base foundation of safety. The one that comes to mind, obviously, is COVID. Do they have the resources needed to properly care for themselves and remain safe in terms of providing services for COVID? When you look at structural firefighting gear, again, those NFPA standards say that at a minimum, in order to conduct any live fire, you're supposed to have gear that's been manufactured within the last 10 years. And they're even recommended having a second set available to all these firefighters as well, because as you know, based on the necessity to keep that gear clean, take it out of service and get it washed, to have another set to put in there. When you look at the self-contained breathing apparatus, the, the air tanks that they wear, making sure those are properly serviced, maintained, and cared for. And, you know, I know this past week, they did pump tests, and making sure those pumps are adequately tested and function. You look at hose testing, ground ladder testing, those are really some of the base components and foundations that all of the team uses on a daily basis to ensure their safety. So those are the real aspects that I'm going to look at right out of the gate in terms of that first 30-day window, to make sure we're meeting at least those needs of the personnel.
Great, thank you, Chris. Really a privilege to meet you, and good luck tonight.
Thank you very much, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Absolutely.
Great, thanks, Counselor Coniff. All right, I'll just look at JP and Omar and see if you guys have anything else. I don't know if the mayor wants to say anything before we go to a vote.
Um, I, one, thank you to the Equipment Subcommittee for doing such a thorough review on Chris Norris as a candidate for fire chief. Certainly, Chris's not only resume, but also surrounding community and community recommendations, and he spoke volumes to me during the process. And I think we're in a very good place with a man of the vision, as well as training, as Chris Norris. So I, of course, hope for a positive outcome here, as well as city council, and I think the city will be stronger because of it, if there is a positive outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, if that's it, I will entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Chris Norris to the fire chief.
It gives me great pleasure to make the motion to have Chris Norris be recommended to the city council for the approval as the fire chief in East Hampton, Massachusetts.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Gomez.
Absolutely, yes.
Counselor Kuzinski.
Aye.
And I am a yes. The motion passes three to zero to recommend Chris Norris to the appointment of fire chief. All right, so that concludes tonight's agenda. Congrats, Chris. We look forward to seeing you later on tonight. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Kuzinski.
Aye.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes, meeting adjourned.
Thank you very much, everyone, greatly appreciated.
Thank you.